Get this meeting started. If we can, hold on. All right, good evening. I hereby call this Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting to Order of July 10, 2023. At this time, I want to invite Dexter Papst up. Dexter is in the 4th grade at Catherine Finchy Elementary School and has been active in the Parks and Rec programs. He has attended our summer camp and after-school program, and Dexter loves cooking and archery. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Dexter. Appreciate you being here and doing that for us. All right, City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeHart.
Here.
Councilmember Hostage. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Pearl Ten Bernstein. Mayor Garner.
Here.
Four members present.
Great. Well, today we are also welcoming another special guest that has four legs, and that is our Palm Springs' own Buddy Holly, a very special Petit Griffin Vindan Hound who beat out more than 3,000 dogs from more than 200 breeds to win Best in Show at the 147th Westminster Kennel Dog Show in New York City. Buddy Holly has many adoring fans in Palm Springs and beyond, and tonight we will be swearing him in as our new ambassador and first-ever canine mayor. So at this time, I'd like to invite Buddy and his mom, Janice Hayes, to come up for a presentation and a swearing-in ceremony. So we do have this proclamation here for you. I'm very excited to present to you. And then we also have a proclamation from the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. So if, Dan Ross, if you want to come up and do that.
So this is a proclamation from the dogs and some of the more friendly canine kitties that we have at the shelter as well. And it reads, "Whereas Buddy Holly, a striking six-year-old, old petit facet hailing from the beautiful Palm Springs, California, won the high honor of America's Best in Show at the prominent 174th Westminster Abbey Dog Show; and whereas Buddy Holly bested six other dog finalists, the best of the best, to garner the most prestigious Dog Show Award in the United States; and whereas the Palm Springs Animal Shelter Canine Council, which consists of over 293 dogs currently housed at the shelter, all breeds, all sizes, would like to recognize Buddy Holly as one of its own; and whereas all the dogs at the shelter are proud to call Buddy Holly the leader of their pack, giving his international fame and his cool demeanor and loving of belly rubs; and as where Buddy Holly also named because he is a buddy to all dogs and people alike; and whereas the Palm Springs Canine Council endorses the action of the city council, selecting Buddy Holly as the canine mayor of Palm Springs; and whereas thousands of other canine retirees here in the city enjoy our pet-friendly neighborhoods, shops, restaurants, and sunny Palm Springs here. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Palm Springs Animal Shelter Canine Council of the City of Palm Springs, California, hereby presents Buddy Holly, the key to the animal shelter."
Thank you so much, Dan. And now we will do a swearing-in of our new canine mayor. Council, if you want to join me, you can. Otherwise, I'll go. All right, Buddy, this is a time to show off your skills. Can you hold up your paw? All right. "I, Buddy Holly, do solemnly swear that as the city of Palm Springs' first-ever canine mayor, I will spread smiles, laughter, and joy wherever I may go in this beautiful city, and that I will serve as the best canine ambassador and role model for other good boys and girls and non-binary dogs to follow. I promise to faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter." Can you shake my paw? Shake my hand? Your paw, my hand? Yay! So now, by the power vested in me on this day, July 10, 2023, I, Mayor Grace Garner, do hereby proclaim that you, Buddy Holly, are the canine mayor of Palm Springs. So if you're up for, we can take a couple pictures. I just want to thank everyone for the treatment we have gotten after Westminster. It is such a dog-friendly city in California, which is definitely becoming harder and harder. And so we're just very honored to be recognized like this. The win itself was huge, but this truly has been very special. So thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. And I also want to give a big thanks to Bones and Scones for helping with these treats and cakes, and to the Palm Springs Animal Shelter for helping out. All right. Well, thank you all so much. And, you know, to all the other dogs in Palm Springs, we also love you very, very much. Especially Spot at my parents' house. All right. All right. Well, this is a very exciting council meeting. We'll give people just a chance to exit before we get back to the agenda. Oh, and thanks to the dogs that came out in the audience. I'm just seeing you. Very cool. All right. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, or request that consent calendar items be removed for a separate discussion. So at this time, I want to entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar or accept the agenda without items 1E and 1F, which would be moved to our meeting, first meeting in September, which I believe is Thursday, September 14. And that is because Councilmember Hostage is not here, and we did discuss at the end of our prior meeting that we would have a full council for discussion of both of those items. So if we can have a motion and a second on acceptance of the agenda. We can all vote electronically today. Great. Motion passes and agenda is accepted. At this time, I invite City Attorney Ballinger to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. The city council met earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda in closed session, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda items you're speaking about. And general public comments for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If you wish to distribute anything, you can hand that over to the city clerk. And Dean, the item that you want to speak about is pulled. You're good? Okay. Great, thank you. All right. So we actually don't have any public comment. Is that correct, City Clerk? It's all non-agenda. All right, so we will move on. The next item is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items 1E and 1F, which will be moved to the next meeting. Do we have a motion and a second? Yes. Okay. Motion passes. We are moving on in record time. The next item on the agenda is item 3A, Proposed Amendment to the Operations Covenant, Transit Occupancy Tax Share, and Site Plan Revisions for the Orchitrine Hotel Development located at 222 South Keweeah Road. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Could we clarify one thing on that motion? Was it to move those two items to the next meeting in July or to September 14?
No, to September 14, because Councilmember DeHart is absent in the next meeting.
Mayor, we have two presentations, vector control.
Oh, my apologies. With all of the excitement with the dogs, I totally forgot. Apologies to vector control. You can come up and do your presentation. I'm sorry about that.
One second. It's on?
It's on. Okay, thank you.
Identify yourself.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Tammy Gordon. I'm with the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. Bit anticlimactic to be here after that, but I will do my best. I want to start out today, kind of let you know what we're going to be doing with some of the work that we have this summer, and start out with my favorite fun fact about mosquitoes, that only female mosquitoes bite. Males have one job. They do it very well. But the females are what bite your blood, so they can get the protein, and they lay their eggs, and that's the reason that they bite. Why that's important is because here in the Coachella Valley, we have 13 different species of mosquito. But as a public health district, we're only interested in three, because only three of those species can actually spread diseases. And we find those diseases, it's endemic, it's every year. And we're only looking for the female ones, obviously. So what we have going are the common mosquitoes first. These are the ones, they're called the culix, common for what everybody knows about mosquitoes, right? They live in those green pools, they live in rural areas, big, big, yucky places in water. And that's where they like to live, that's where they like to grow, that's where they like to bite. They do spread disease here in the valley. Right now, we have active transmission in the East Valley of St. Louis Encephalitis virus. And as you can see on that picture on the right, that's the kind of habitat those mosquitoes are looking for. But what we're really concerned with here in Palm Springs is this little gal. She is the invasive 80s egypti. She has a completely different habitat and different lifestyle than our culix mosquitoes. She doesn't live in big pools. She lives in things as small as a tablespoon of water. And her favorite food happens to be people, which means she lives in your backyard. She likes cryptic sources, like underneath the saucers of your potted plants, in fountains that you don't often turn on, or even a dog dish or a pet dish that you don't change every three or four days. She can grow, and she is here in Palm Springs. So because of our traps and our surveillance, we do regular surveillance everywhere throughout the valley, and we have identified an area in Palm Springs that is particularly infested with this invasive mosquito. So this year, we'll be doing some treatments. This is the area that we have. We're going to start at the end of July. It's going to go every Saturday from 1:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. We'd like to get there in the middle of the night, where people are not going to be around. And we'll go every Saturday morning through September. The area there is identified as Racket Club Road, Sunrise Way, Alejo, and the mountains. The application that we're going to be using, the treatment, is called BTI, which is an organic material. It's common in soil, but when the mosquito actually ingests it, it is specific to mosquitoes and black flies, and once those larvae ingest it, they can no longer produce, and they can't grow into biting females. Again, it is approved for organic products, so there is no toxicity and safe for all people. We did start a website. Obviously, that picture is a little bit wrong, but the website is cbmosquito.org/palmsprings2023. And I update that website every time we do an application. So if there's something, problems with the weather, it's too windy, something like that, I'll post that it doesn't get done that week, or whether or not it got completed. So that will be the most current information that we have. It also on that website has FAQs, so more information on what we're doing, what kind of applications are going to be happening, and all of that information there. So one thing that we're really, really interested in is when I said that there are cryptic sources that the mosquito can live in. It's in your backyard, and the hardest thing for a vector control district to do is get access to your backyard. Who has the best access? You do. It really is a community effort, because the easiest thing that we can do, the cheapest thing that we can do, and the most effective thing that anybody can do is dump out the water. It doesn't take a product, it doesn't take any money. It is as simple as you going outside before you go and take your trash out once a week, just look around your home and dump out that water, and we'll have a whole lot less of that invasive species. Some other things that you can do other than dumping out that water, drill some holes into the bottom of those potted plants, or just throw the saucer away. They're not really that useful here in the desert. It actually causes more root rot than anything else, so that collection of water at the bottom isn't helping anything. Might as well just throw that saucer away. Bird baths need to be washed, because these invasive, because they're so good at infesting places, it's because their eggs dry out. They don't actually need water right then. They'll lay it where their body tells them they need to, right above the water line, and their eggs can actually stay there and die a pozz for over two years. Then when it gets water, that's when they'll hatch, and that's when they'll start a new problem. So if you do a quick swipe around those dog dishes or those bird baths, we'll take care of that. And of course, anything that has green water, long drains, your fountains, anything like that is really, really important to get rid of. That is what I have for you today. We do have an email list where when we have virus or applications, I do send them out in the list, so you are more than welcome to sign up there. And if you have any questions, I'm here to take them. Other than that, I'm available whenever you need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does council have any questions? All right. Thank you so much. That was really informative. We really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move back to item 3A, which is regarding the Orchitrine Hotel Development. If we can have a staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight in 3A is a second amendment to a TOT operating covenant between the city of Palm Springs and the owners of the Orchitrine Hotel. I believe the city council is familiar with the history of this hotel project, which dates back to 2014 and some 2016 entitlements. As the council is aware, the council entered into a TOT operating covenant with the operator and owner of this property back in 2020, right before COVID hit. As a result of COVID, the property owner asserted a force majeure claim with regard to their obligations to process the entitlements and building plans for the project. Once they did that, city staff met with them, and through a series of discussions and negotiations, we brought back a first amendment to the TOT operating agreement back in 2021. That agreement provided for revised milestones and other obligations of the property owner, as well as one final force majeure provision, but with the added caveat that in order for them to invoke that force majeure, they would be required to get a third-party report. Late last year, about midway through last year in August, the property owner submitted to the city that type of a report by CBRE, which is a well-known real estate broker, as well as they've got a robust hotel marketing program as well. And that report essentially concluded that despite the best efforts of the property owner to obtain financing, various market conditions would make it difficult for him to move forward with the project at that time. As a result, city staff met with the property owner and his attorney and his team over the last several months. We brought back to the council in February of this year. over the last several months. We brought back to the council in February of this year some revised terms that the property owner had proposed, which would include a $1 million penalty in the event he did not move forward with the project as contemplated. It also included a revised conceptual plan for the hotel that reduced the scope of the hotel and the cost of construction. He also proposed at that time a revised tax sharing deal whereby the owner would essentially receive 100% of the TOT for at least the first 10 years of operation. He proposed for the city to defer its development fees for three years, the first three years of operation, as well as city assistance with utility undergrounding. He requested that the city cooperate in processing a condo plan for at least five of the units to be sold as residential condos and not taxed under the city's TOT program. At the time the city council considered this proposal in February, the city council made it clear to city staff that it was not inclined to entertain that proposal and gave us direction to negotiate further with the property owner in a way that essentially did not create any kind of precedent from this project, but only did things that the city had done with other deals. And so that is essentially what we are bringing back to you as part of the proposed second amendment to the TOT agreement. The first component is a revised timeline that sets forth different time periods within which the property owner is required to submit entitlements, then construction plans, obtain their building permit, obtain their financing, and then start and complete construction. And the timeline essentially provides for a time period within which the project would be completed and operating within 44 months following the city's issuance of the discretionary entitlements for the project. The agreement also provides that the city's permit, entitlement, and development impact fees would be deferred for the first three years of operation, but with the caveat that the property owner would basically pay interest on those amounts to the city based on the city's municipal financing rate at the time. And so the city essentially would not be out of any money, but would be providing a form of a loan to the developer. City staff believes this is consistent with at least some other projects that the city has been involved in and would not set a precedent for this particular project. The agreement in front of you also proposes to provide assistance and not oppose a condominium portion of the project, and again, provide for up to five units that would be exempt from the city's transient occupancy tax. The agreement also expands the definition of luxury hotel and provides the developer with a little bit more flexibility in terms of the type and brands of luxury hotels that the owner would be able to operate the hotel as. And then finally, the agreement provides for not a $1 million penalty as proposed by the owner previously, but instead, a potential remedy for the city in the event the property owner does not develop in compliance with the agreement. The city would be able to terminate the agreement and recover from the property owner the city's costs that it has incurred in negotiating these various deals over the years in order to essentially make the city whole. The agreement has been provided to you and is attached. I believe the property owner is here. He indicated that he was going to be here, and his attorney is also on the line if you have any questions that you'd like to pose of them. That concludes my staff presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions or comments? Mayor, Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. A few questions, and I will have a comment as well. I want to walk through the timeline just a bit. As I understand it, the developer, assuming that we approve this evening, would then have 90 days or three months effectively in order to submit to us their schematic plans. And then another seven months after they receive approval, they're to present 80% complete construction documents. And then three months after that, they would have to have obtained all of their financing. Am I correct?
Close.
Okay.
The one difference is that 11 months after they receive the entitlements, they would have a completed drawing set to submit for building permits. And so that's the one distinction. Seven months, they'll be 80% complete by 11 months is when they submit for the building permit.
All right.
And then at 14 months is when they obtain their construction financing.
And if they fail on any of these deadlines, what happens at that point?
If they fail and they do not correct those failures, then the city would be entitled to terminate the agreement and again, recover those sums that I discussed earlier.
All right. And I'm going to change gears from this plan. We have also seen in social media and now reported in today's paper, a six, seven-story residential project that the developer has said they will do if they are not able to move forward with the hotel project. And it's being asserted to the public that they have an absolute right to build that type of structure under new state law. Is that a correct interpretation of their right?
They absolutely do not have an absolute right to develop that project, at least without any sort of city council review. The city is still vested with considerable discretion through the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as even the Builders' Remedy Law that they have cited. So they do not have an absolute right, and the city would still be very much involved in reviewing any project if they were to submit that application.
Thank you. I have some comments, but those were my questions.
Do we have any other questions, Mayor Protem?
So I just want to confirm that tonight, we're asking, being asked to look at the revisions to the hotel site plan, which is that scaled-down version we see in attachment C. Is that correct?
Sort of. We're really asking the council to review the agreement that establishes the framework for the processing of that application for the revised hotel project. They have not submitted a full application for the revised hotel project, but this certainly creates the framework for it. And Councilmember Middleton raises a good point, that this is definitely not an agenda item dealing with the hotel project. It is an agenda item dealing, I'm sorry, with the housing project. It is an agenda item dealing with the hotel project.
Okay. So we're not in any way even considering that seven-story building tonight?
Correct.
That was in the agenda?
Correct. That was provided really as background to the discussion.
Okay. And the interest that's paid on the three years we've done, on the delayed permits, we have had precedent for that?
It's my understanding that the city has, with other projects, deferred payment of development impact fees and entitlement fees, either with or without interest, but this being proposed tonight is with interest. I believe Mr. Verada might be able to indicate which projects those were.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. We definitely have deferred or waived fees for affordable housing projects. So that is the projects we are familiar with that that has been done. Specific other projects, it's the affordable housing projects that I know of that the fees have been waived.
Okay, thank you. So that's the only kind of project. Now, what is our recourse if they don't pay those fees, assuming now they've already built in their property?
The agreement would provide that the city would be able to recoup those fees from the TOT rebates that we would otherwise be paying to them. So the agreement provides that they would be rebated some of the TOT fees if we weren't able to collect the amount due to the city through normal ways, in terms of, you know, demand letters. The city would be able to basically withhold the TOT rebate that we would otherwise be paying them.
Okay. And the rebate right now is set at 75%, up to $50 million?
Correct.
Okay. Those are my questions. I have some comments later. Thank you.
Any Councilmember DeHart?
Jeff, you started to touch on it, that we're not looking at the seven-story, 308-unit development. What's the reason why it was included in today's packet and why the people and the folks are seeing it out in the media?
It was really provided just for the council to have context in terms of, the property owner several months ago indicated that if they were not able to move forward with the hotel project, that they would utilize the property for another project. And so in the interest of transparency and letting the public know what the property owner was referencing, we included that information in the agenda packet.
Excellent. I think we're just trying to make sure that the community understands that nothing like this 308-unit development is before council, and it is definitely not something under consideration. So question on, what's the time that is given to cure a default in the milestone schedule?
Generally, it's 30 days.
And then what happens? At 30 days, it's not fixed, then what?
If it's not fixed, or they're not making extraordinary efforts to move forward to fix it, we would send them a notice and let them know that the city views the agreement as over, terminated.
Wow. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Sounds like we've got questions. Does anyone want to start? Councilmember Middleton?
So I'm going to support the amendments with reluctance, but I think staff has done an outstanding job. And I want to thank Flynn and the city attorney for the work specifically that you have done in getting us to this point. As to whether this project will ultimately be completed, that's dependent on the developer's ability to raise the funds, either through their own resources or through the capital markets to complete this project. But the city has bent over backwards in order to make this a successful project, and we have withstood one delay after another in moving forward. We've, on multiple occasions, said this is it, and then we get another threat of lawsuit. So this is it. I want to make though, one comment. The residential complex is absolutely not before us. And Mr. Weintraub knows, because I have told him, I believe that that project was surfaced specifically in order to inflame the public and scare the public in the hopes that we would create more favorable terms in this agreement. We were not scared, and we did not create any new more favorable terms. And the goodwill of this council member has been exhausted as a result of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Well said. Mayor Protem?
I'm going to echo that. And I think in one of the reports that I read from the Desert Sun, there was comments from this council member Middleton in 2018 about no more delays. And it just shows how much we have bent over backwards to try and make this project work. I have serious doubts whether this developer is serious about doing it, but I really hope I'm proven wrong. And I also echo the problem with presenting that seven-story building was not just a scare about height, but there was all kinds of comments about affordable housing and raised really ugly comments about not having affordable housing in people's neighborhoods. And it really was a bad plan and bad faith by this developer. And so I agree, we'll go forward with these last few changes in the hopes that it will come, move forward. And I look forward to seeing the actual plans. And I don't see any more concessions on the part of council for this developer ever.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I strongly agree with everything that's been said. Thank you very much. All right, if we can get a motion and a second and vote. Great. Motion passes for two, I'm sorry, yes, four with one abstent, with one absence. All right. We are moving right along. Shortest meeting ever. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. And two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. But I do want to start off with John Bolton. The city did present a proclamation to the Firebirds, and so we want to give John the first opportunity He should be on the line. John, are you there? Well, if he did leave, I will just reiterate that we are just very excited at the great success of the Firebirds and how far they came in their league this year. And we look forward to many more successful games. If you have not been yet, definitely go. And one more opportunity, John Bolton, are you there? All right. It sounds like he's not. But that's all right. All right. We'll move on to the other public comments. We have Zachary Daniel Stone, followed by Geraldine Mataras.
I don't know if he has.
He's here.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I want to start out with a congrats to Buddy Holly. Quite an achievement, another first. I'm not sure. Could be for dogs, could be for the breed, could be for gender, no idea. Let's see. Or more, I don't know, as a canine mayor. So that's pretty impressive. I'd like to thank the council for taking DEI so seriously. Appreciate it. Switzerland, read this today, importing more cheese than they're exporting. It's actually really interesting if you think about it. If homelessness is a priority, let's prove it. If affordable housing is a priority, let's prove it. Nothing on the agenda tonight really reflected that. Desert Hot Springs is capping short-term rental units at 4%. Let's set a cap in Palm Springs. Why would you not consider or want to consider a 308-unit apartment complex? Goodwill has nothing to do with it. It's your duty. My challenge to you again, establish a homeless commissioner, a task force. I mean, let's do something a little different. Also, congrats on the meeting time tonight. This has been excellent. You guys did really, really well. Still didn't follow Robert's rules all the way, but this could be what all the meetings are like if you actually would pick this book up and follow the rules, especially with the questioning. Finally, had a book today while I was at the library, The Four Workarounds. Strategies from the World's Scrappiest Organizations for Tackling Complex Problems. Thought, oh, all right, let's open it up and read a little. We constantly encounter complex problems at home, in our places of work, and in society at large. Even if we had all the time and money in the world, sometimes no good solution can be found. So what should we do, especially when we can't wait? The answer? A workaround. Boom, right on that. That was pretty sweet.
Just make sure you speak to the mic. If you can, just come, yep. We won't be able to hear you unless you're speaking into the mic.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, first time I'm addressing like this. My name is Geraldine Mataras, you can call me Jerry. Okay. I have my house for 28 years here in the desert. And I lived in Palm Springs on and off, maybe a month out of the year, for 28 years. And last year, my husband and I were in the hospital together. And we had COVID, and he passed, and I survived. So we always said- So I, we always said that if something happened, either one of us, we could come live in the house, and it's financially better for me, too. So I was always here, the only reason I'm mentioning is because I was always here temporarily. I never knew what was really going on here until the last six months that I've been here constantly. And a couple of things came up that I just want, from an outsider's point of view, because I was always in LA, is, I don't know if I bring them up right or not. We have, I was so happy to see all the dogs here today, especially that Protem, you know, dog mayor, okay? And that's very nice. And even in the city, when you walk around, we have a little Shih Tzu Maltese mix. She's the lover of our life. She's six years old. Her name is Pepper. And I love her very much, and so do my daughters. They're all grown, but they live with me because they're in business for themselves. So what happened is, is that, I'll make it short. On two occasions, the dog got really sick, and unfortunately, it was about between 7:00 and 12:00 o'clock midnight. And the second time, the dog almost passed, and we didn't know why until we got home. We had found out she was eating an electrical cord, and because when we found her, she was like this, and we thought she was dead. And we didn't know what to do, so we called up, and everybody was closed. We couldn't find anybody. To make a long story short, there was a recording on one of the machines on one of the VCA hospitals saying that if your dog is sick because it swallowed some kind of a medication or got poisoned, this is the number to call, and you pay $95, and you could talk to that person about the poisoning. Well, my daughter called anyway. The dog wasn't, we didn't think she was poisoned. She called anyway, and she spoke to the gentleman, and he said, okay. He said, it doesn't seem to be in that kind of a problem. He said, but if you go to Indio, there's a vet that's open there 24 hours.
Jerry, your time has elapsed.
Oh, okay. I guess I have to stop. Well, can I say something else that's regarding Southern California Edison?
If you can just make it very, very brief.
Okay. There's, I'm paying $115 for delivery charges for Southern California Edison. And I also had about $1,200 for a hotel when the lights went out for three days in a week. And I have fought them hard, and I'm finally getting my money back. But someone's canvassing the area, telling me that they're not, we're not supposed to be paying delivery charges.
Okay.
And they won't talk to me about it, Southern California. And I seriously suggest that you look into it to see, is this right?
Okay.
Or wrong? And also
Thank you.
Get more vets, because I almost lost my dog because Palm Springs doesn't have a vet that's open during the night.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I talks too much.
No, it's all right. It's your first time here. Thank you so much for coming. All right. With that, the next item is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Just a quick reminder to everyone, including the public, that our next meeting on July 24th will be our last meeting before the city council goes on recess for the month of August. You'll see on our schedule for July 24th, we are going to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. You'll remember that all of the cities in California are trying to comply with their regional housing network, housing goals, and we are trying to get our, the city's housing element approved by both city council and the Planning Commission at that meeting on July 24th, at which time we would then forward on our final housing element draft to the Housing and Conservation Department for the State of California, and with hopeful approval of our housing element during the month of August, so it's completed when we come back in September. So that'll be a big item for us on the 24th. We have our routine street lighting, park maintenance district public hearing. We have an expired cannabis permit hearing that needs to be scheduled. You'll note that our hotel tax incentive program ordinance will be back to you for your consideration. We have our inclusionary housing study. Work that we've been doing will be back for consideration. And then, of course, we've been working on regulations around food, our food truck ordinance, and we'll have that for the council as well. So we'll have quite a bit of business right before we go on summer recess. So that's all I have. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments or items? Councilmember to heart?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I would like to ask council to, that we put on a future agenda, the opportunity to discuss an ambassador program downtown and the surrounding areas, and possibly give our city manager direction to explore a program downtown that can deliver customer service, personal interaction, and programs to fit the needs of business, community, our tourists, and residents.
Do we have support for that item? Okay. You've got it. Any other comments or agenda items? Go ahead, Councilmember to heart.
Just thanks to the city staff and everybody who was involved in our Fourth of July celebrations that occurred throughout the city is just a tremendous job in a wide variety of programming. I think our Parks and Rec Department and all our city departments really did a great job, so kudos to everybody.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we hope everyone has a lovely evening, this early council meeting. And this meeting is adjourned until July, and, I'm sorry, the meeting is adjourned, and the next meeting will be July 24th. Thank you.